All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our October Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, I'm gonna have us stand and do the pledge of allegiance to Mr. Tyler, lead us in the indication.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for such a great place to live. We ask you please to continue your blessings that this city's had. Ask you to please be with all our city employees and officials. Pray that the commission will do the best job we can to make this, make our decisions for the betterment of the city. For all these things in Christ's name, amen.
Again, thank you guys for joining us for our October Planning Commission meeting. And we've got a lot on the agenda, but it's always a good thing because that is just, again, the growth of our city. So I'm looking forward to going through a lot of those things on here. I will ask you guys as far as if you do need, if you do need to address one of the topics on here that you use the mic up there, and just make sure you state your name and address when you are presenting to us on there. So I'll call this meeting to order. We can do roll call?
Howard Austin. Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James David. Shannon Mueller. Peyton Parker. Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
And the minutes for September, if you've had a chance to review that, any changes, questions about those?
I have a motion by Dr. Compton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So first section, oh, by the way, we have two items on the agenda that we will not hear this evening, and if you had a chance to pick up the packet, those are in there. We've got two large scales, L-21-32 Aspen Park Building, and then L-21-33 Berryfield Apartment Phase Two. Neither one of those will be heard this evening on here. Those have been tabled per staff. Tabled items from last month, the first item we have on the agenda is L-21-29 Office Warehouse, Highway 112 and Marchant Road, northwest corner of Highway 112 and Marchant Road. Also have a series of variances, B-21-82 Deviation Commercial Design Standards on Entrance, Parking Lot Orientation, Structure Back and Sides, Pedestrian Flow and Landscaping. And in addition, a waiver for street improvements for Marchant Road. This is all presented by Kraft and Toll.
Yes, my name is Daniel Ellis with Kraft and Toll and Associates. For this project, we are proposing to do four office warehouse type structures to be located at the intersection of Highway 112 and Marchant Road. As a part of this development, we are proposing parking and associated drive as well as dedicating some access easements as requested by staff. We're also showing the proposed improvements by RDOT for the roundabout at this intersection and are proposing to dedicate the necessary right-of-way to facilitate that construction. And we'd be happy to answer any questions the commissioners have.
Staff comments?
Street improvements on Marchant, and there's been a waiver requested for them. Commercial design standard comments include no more than 60% of the off-street parking area for the entire property can be located between the front facade within the front yard of the principal building and the primary abutting street unless the building and/or parking lots are screened from view by outlot development, i.e. restaurants, and additional tree plantings and/or berms. There's been a variance requested for this. Where a facade faces adjacent residential uses or an area on the comprehensive land use plan designated for residential use and earth and berm shall be installed no less than six feet in height containing a minimum of a double row of evergreen or deciduous trees planted at 15 feet intervals plus all landscaping requirements set forth in Chapter 56 of the Springdale Code of Ordinance. There's been a variance requested for this. Sidewalk along all sides of lot abutting public right-of-way required per master street plan, there's been a variance requested. A five-foot wide sidewalk along the full length of the building along any side that features a customer entrance is required. This sidewalk shall be set back from the building foundation at least six feet to provide areas for foundation landscaping. There's been a variance requested for this. Foundation landscaping being required, variance is requested, and direct access to public sidewalk network, variance has been requested.
These are engineering comments. Your storm pipes should be minimum 18 inches. There needs to be a note that the detention pond shall be sodded. There's a couple revisions needed to the drainage report. Sheet flow length should be maximum 100 feet. We'll need to see a draft of the drainage and access easements, but that can be contingent upon your certificate of occupancy. And I'm not seeing your drainage easement called out on the plans. And then also, the developer is required to improve the abutting streets to Springdale standards, and there has been a waiver requested for that.
Okay, Daniel, only 60% of the off-street parking, basically that this being accessed by a private drive off of Marchant?
Yes, ma'am.
And there are four outlots in front of that that will have commercial development on that?
Correct.
So that really is why the variance, those outlots aren't there yet? Okay, nothing's been built on them?
We are creating, we are creating the outlots, but we're not developing the outlots as a part of this, that's correct.
So there will be screening from the public street once those are built? And you don't anticipate dedicating that private drive as a public street anytime in the future?
Actually, one of the comments we got from engineering was that we go ahead and design this so that it could be dedicated in the future if it needs to be. So it will be built to City of Springdale street specifications, but it is just being shown as an access easement for now. But if sometime in the future, if it does become a public street, it can be converted.
Okay, and this is all one lot? You're not proposing to divide this into four separate lots? So it's just one, one lot with access off of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You want to talk about the changes that you've made in the facades so that we can address that? Can we go to those drawings? Are you addressing the?
Yes, ma'am, I am. I can go ahead and do that. We've gone ahead and added articulation along the back facade that would be facing to the south, as well as added parapets and screening along the roof line. The sides were actually less than 100 feet, so we kind of left, left those the same. As far as dealing with the, with the foundation landscaping, we've added foundation landscaping where we can, except for where we need to have access for vehicular, for vehicles to enter in and out of the building, because this is a warehouse office-type building. We will have drive-up garage doors. But I do think that we've updated the elevations to meet the intent of the commercial design standards. I do have the architect here who need to get more clarification.
And did you add additional landscaping along the west side of this?
Yes, ma'am.
To screen to the residential, to the?
Yes, we did. We added the, we added the evergreens that were requested.
Okay.
We know, and we also have a privacy fence shown back there also with the brick columns spaced out as specified in the commercial design standards. We do have the evergreens and the opaque screen.
Do you have any sidewalk access from this one lot to Marchant Road?
We do have easement shown in place. We do have a no-place there when the commercial outlots are developed, that it will be extended down to 112. And we are proposing to extend the sidewalk to Marchant. So when RDOT does come in and do the improvements that are shown on 112 and Marchant, then we'll be connected to the sidewalk that they're doing.
Will you be bonding for those so that we know? Because the highway department's not gonna be ready.
Yes, ma'am. Our intention is to bond for the, for the street improvements, and if RDOT doesn't come in there, then the bond will be in place to ensure that the contractor and the owners do good to help.
And that's really why you're asking for the waiver of the, of the Marchant Road improvements, because at this point, all we have is a concept for what the roundabout's gonna look like. We really don't even know how far back they're going to go and be acquiring right-of-way, and it doesn't make any sense to build road improvements that are gonna come out sometime in the near future. So stack reports that, that waiver. Anything else I missed? Nope. Anything else that, Dan?
Amen.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission? Got any questions on the variances?
Daniel, is the right-of-way that is shown with the drawing from RDOT, is that greater than what would be required by the standard street department, or master street plan, or is it less?
It's, it's greater on both Marchant and on 112 because of the tapers and the way that they're doing the splitter lanes and how they're diverting the traffic up into the roundabout. And especially at intersection, we're showing that it quite a bit more right-of-way than what would be required for a standard signalized intersection. So I mean, we did work off of the 30% plan that RDOT provided, the public hearings, to the public hearings, and that's, that's the best information we've got right now.
Okay.
I think it puts us in a lot better position than, than we would have been if we just took standard.
Absolutely. I think, I mean, the point of my question there is I think they're doing any more right-of-way than they technically would have to.
Correct.
So it makes the waiver of street improvements to Marchant a little bit more palatable. The other question I had was, I know that you don't have the foundation landscaping across the front because of the garage doors, but on the site overall, do you have as much as would be required? Have you relocated it so that we have the same volume of landscaping that we would get normally?
Yes, sir, we did. We've had, we've added a lot of landscaping around the site. And like was required before with the variance on the back, we added a lot more trees back there. It wasn't just shrubs and plantings, we actually added trees of all different species on the site for that.
Okay, thank you. I had two questions. One is on this type of development, is there any trash receptacle?
They have a dumpster location that's screened the same as, with the same kind of materials in between the first two buildings and the last two buildings, it's their dumpster locations.
Okay, I missed that, so.
Yeah.
The out parcels, will those be facing 112?
I mean, in theory, yes, sir, that would be the intent, that they would face 112.
That's what we're anticipating. Though their access will be limited because with that, where 112 is a access management, access-controlled location, being that, that close to the roundabout, they will be able to go right in, right out, that's all. And have to come out the backside onto that private drive if they want to go.
Okay.
Yeah, RDOT's proposing to median through most of 112 through there, so it'll be very limited full access. And the last plans we looked at, they didn't have full access where anywhere in this, in the frontage of this property, so Pat's is right. Most of them will have to exit out on the Marchant and then go through the roundabout to head north or south.
I think there's only one more break in, in the access between here and the roundabout at 612.
Yes, ma'am.
To give a place where you can do a U-turn and go back the other way.
Correct.
But there's only one more access point.
That's correct.
Between here and 612.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? So do you guys want to take all the variances together? That'd be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Right, good with all of them together?
Yes.
Have a call for vote by Mr. Covert?
She got it. Ready?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Austin?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Okay, the variance has passed nine zero. Do I have a recommendation for the waiver for street improvements?
In light of the additional right-of-way being granted, I would make the motion that we recommend to the city council that the waiver be approved.
Motion by Mr. Peters. Does he have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Waiver passes nine zero. Do I have a motion on large scale?
Motion to approve large scale.
Motion by Mr. Covert.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, subject to staff comments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Dr. Compton?
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Large scale passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next tabled item, L-21-30 Wagon Wheel Storage, 3562 Wagon Wheel Road. We have variances and a waiver as well. The variance is 21-81 for deviation of commercial design standards, the entrance, parking lot orientation, structure back and sides, pedestrian flow, central features and community space, facades and exterior walls, detailed features, roofs, materials and colors, landscaping, screening. Waiver 21-13 of street improvements on Wildwood Lane, presented by Kraft and Toll.
Yes, my name is Daniel Ellis with Kraft and Toll and Associates. This project that we're proposing is to be an office warehouse structure that is located on the south end of the property facing toward Wagon Wheel Road with, with some enclosed condition RV, conditioned and non-conditioned RV storage and some mini storage as well. We have reviewed through the staff comments, and I don't think we have any issues with most of the staff comments or any of the staff comments. But I do would like, or I would like to add that we would like to withdraw our waiver request for the half-street improvements on Wildwood. We have visited with the developer, and they are willing to proceed with doing the half-street improvements. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Before we do staff comments, I want a couple of comments about this. If you're driven by the site, you will see that they've already done a lot of ready work. They were granted a provisional grading permit by the engineering department. Katie, and I want you to explain to them what a provisional grading permit is and why we are so far along with this job, having not had planning commission approval.
Sure. So provisional grading permits are for projects that are under review, and we expect to be approved, and they're able to start on their dirt work a little early. Since this project was tabled last month, and they weren't able to get started as fast as they wanted to, we issued them a provisional grading permit so they could get started until they were heard at this meeting. We issued those permits for six months, and if they do not get their large-scale development approved by the end of those six months, then work has to stop, and they have to re-vetitate the site and return it to a completion of construction standard.
Okay, Katie, the, normally a provisional grading permit is only for clearing, filling, excavating, demolition, similar activities than that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If you go out there, they have prepared the pads, they've got the street cut, they've got the detention pond already built. Is there a reason why we let them go that much further than we normally would have on this project?
So grading and dirt work is generally permitted. It, where, I mean, whether structures built or utilities put in?
Well, there's no structures or utilities, but the pad itself has been built. The road bed is ready. I mean, they're ready to start building the...
Sure.
I, I think my caution is we need to make sure that we don't get ahead of ourselves in the future with a provisional grading permit till the application has actually been approved by the planning commission. So we need to internally talk about what is a provisional grading permit and make sure we hold it to that. Because what we don't want is projects going out there and developers taking a great risk on moving a lot of dirt, getting a pad built, and then there's something happened in the planning commission meeting and that doesn't move forward.
Exactly. And I reported at the pre-construction meeting that, you know...
I'm not saying that cross them down anymore, then, I mean, they're not, they're not at fault, other than they're just doing as much as they can get done. Most contractors will do that. We've internally got to make sure that we don't let these things get out of hand, and the planning commission approves them before we get too much work done on these in the future. So we'll be scheduling something in the future to make sure we get this taken care of.
Sounds good.
Okay. Ricky, you want to go through the rest of the comments?
All sides of a principal building that directly faces an abutting public right-of-way shall feature at least one customer entrance unless the principal building directly faces more than two abutting rights-of-way, then only two entrances are required, one along the primary street and one along a secondary street. A variance has been requested. Where a facade faces adjacent residential uses or a berm, or I'm sorry, or an area on the comprehensive land use plan designated for residential use and earth and berm shall be installed in less than six feet in height containing at a minimum a double row of evergreen or deciduous trees planted at a 15-feet interval plus all landscaping requirements set forth in Chapter 56 of the Springdale Code of Ordinance. A variance has been requested. Build, building foundation landscaping, a variance has been requested. Central features and community spaces shall have direct access to the public sidewalk, variance has been requested. No more than 60% of off-street parking area located between front facade within the front yard of the principal building, a variance has been requested. Facades over 100 feet in linear length shall incorporate wall projections and/or recesses per Springdale Commercial Design Standard, a variance has been requested. Building facades shall include a repeating pattern with no less than three of the following: color change, texture change, material module change, expressions of an architectural or structural bay through a change in plane no less than 12 inches in width, such as an offset, reveal or projecting rib. At least one element must repeat horizontally, and no element shall repeat at intervals of greater than 30 feet horizontally or vertically, a variance has been requested. Roof lines shall be varied with a change in height every 100 linear feet in the building length, a variance has been requested. Sidewalk along all sides of lot abutting public right-of-way required per master street plan, five-foot continuous internal pedestrian walkways from public sidewalk to principal customer entrance of all principal buildings on site. Five-foot sidewalk along the full length of building on facade featuring customer entrance and facade abutting, public parking area six feet from facade of building. Weather protection features within 30 feet of all customer entrances constructed parallel to building facade, a variance has been requested. Predominant exterior building materials shall be high-quality materials, including without limitation the following: brick, native or natural stone, synthetic stone, concrete, masonry units, smooth face units with integral color, synthetic stucco, ephesus, architectural precast concrete, decorative face, concrete, tilt-up panels, glass, wood, natural or composite, variance requested. Facades included include a repeating pattern with no less than three elements: color changes, texture change, material change. At least one element repeating horizontally. Elements repeat at intervals of more than 30 feet horizontally or vertically, change in plane no less than 12 inches in width, offset, reveal or projecting rib, a variance has been requested. And facades and exterior walls face over 100 feet in linear length incorporate wall projections or recesses, minimum three feet in depth, minimum of 20 contiguous feet within each 100-foot facade length extends 20 feet of the facade, or I'm sorry, 20% of the facade, and a variance has been requested.
Submit the draft of your drainage easements. Add temporary erosion control within your pond. Show street, oh, no, that's Wildwood Lane. That's no longer applicable. Your driveway onto Wagon Wheel Road needs to match Springdale Commercial Design, or driveway detail and not encroach upon the neighbor's property. Please call out right-of-way on both streets and call out existing and proposed streetlights.
Now, they do need to show those street improvements on Wildwood because they're not asking for a waiver. So the plans will have to show the street improvements.
Yes, you're correct. Yes, please show street improvements on Wildwood Lane.
And we really need to coordinate that with projects going across the road on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's start with the, we kind of have a unique situation because you've got one type of principal building up front, and then you have storage units in the back. So we're really talking about variances that are applied to two different kinds of structures.
Correct.
Okay, so we, can we get to the elevations that kind of shows you what they look like in a layout? Let's talk about the principal building. It really meets the design standards with all the wall projections, with the changes in colors and all that. So there's not really any variances being requested for that building.
Just, just the one, and that's the, having a customer entrance off of the, on the Wildwood side. And that's because this is a warehouse office building, so there's really, you know, by the time you get back there, that's, that's where the, the warehouse space is at, so it didn't make a lot of sense to have a customer entrance there. But other than that, that building does meet all the commercial design standards.
And you have foundation landscaping.
Yes, ma'am.
You have all the brides, you have the parapet walls that cover the, the units on the roof, all those kinds of things. Okay, then let's go to the storage buildings in the back. That's where the predominant amount of variances are for the buildings.
Correct.
So on the ends of each of the structures that face Wildwood, this is the project, this is what it looks like. We'll have the projection in the wall, it will have, what are those materials on the outside?
Oh, that's, that's a masonry material, I believe it's brick. And then, and then we are gonna have landscape, or foundation landscaping on the end of each of those buildings as well. And I know the renderings don't show it, but the landscape plan does. So we are gonna have the foundation landscaping on those.
Okay. Let's back up to the principal building, and what's the materials of the, the outside material?
That one is, is a precast concrete, and, or it's mostly concrete, and I can't remember what else it is off the top of my head, but I know it's, it's all concrete and masonry products, maybe some architectural metal, but that's it.
Okay, so the, the dark colors that you see on there is a different material that may be the same kind of brick that's on the end of the storage units, or is it a different material?
Storage buildings, materials?
No, the, the, the three bumpouts on the, on the primary building, are those the same as the brick on the end?
Yes, we, we tried to put any of those short facades that did not have primary storage doors to have improved materials. So those short facades there facing the, the street or the right-of-way are also the improved materials.
Okay, so it's all, but it's the same material on all the buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, so then when you get back to the, to the storage units, you have put that same brick material on the end of any of those buildings that face out to the public?
Yes.
And then on the backside of the building, on the west side, what's on, what's on the material on the backside of the building on the west side that's a storage unit?
Right, right through here. That's a metal wall panel.
That's a metal wall panel.
Okay, and you have done additional landscaping along that?
Yeah, we have done additional landscaping, and that's also, it's kind of the, the grade, we're sitting quite a bit lower, so a lot of that screened as well from the neighbors just with the way we've graded the side.
And the storage units that are on the west side of the property are actually those that have, are designed for RVs and that kind of stuff to go with them?
Yes, ma'am.
All of those in that northern section of that whole storage unit is all for RVs or boats or cars or something like that?
It's for, it's for high-end, mostly for high-end RVs and things like that. The, the developer is kind of targeting a very certain type of clientele. We're talking, you know, significant vehicles, and so the security and how they manage this facility is gonna be done in a very particular way to make sure that their clientele is comfortable leaving their vehicles at this, at this campus.
Okay, and you have a similar type project like this in other areas of the country? This is being modeled after, this is not your first rodeo on this one, correct?
No, ma'am, this is, this is being modeled after one that has been done all over northwest Arkansas and around the country.
So that, that covers the, the variance request for most of the things that are, are being asked for in the commercial design standards. You don't have sidewalks along the abutting side, you don't have the two entrances on the principal building, you don't have sidewalk from the storage units down to Wildwood either. The access point on that is really just emergency access only, and it will be guided, nobody comes in and out of that?
That's right, it's, it's primarily there for emergency access only. We've got the, we've got the stacking lane, and the better entrances off the wagon wheel, and that's, and that's the principal road anyways, and that's where traffic should be coming and going from, and not down a side street. So that's, that's how we've designed the campus.
Okay. And we can go into more details, but does that cover all the places you might have for the commercial design standards? I guess I'm just loud enough.
I'll wait till you get to the council or to the committee.
Okay. And then, let's see, the, any other variances that I didn't cover?
I don't believe so.
Ruth?
I will, I will, I do want to add one thing. There are sections of these, of the storage facilities in the back, that we are, we are doing the enhanced landscaping, and we are also doing an opaque screen with this also with the brick columns every 50 feet to kind of still add that articulation, make sure that we're doing something that's, that's, you know, that's actually screening this property from the public rights way and the residential properties to the north and the east. make sure that we're doing something that's, that's, you know, that's actually screening this property from the public rights way and the residential properties to the north and the east.
None of the roofs on the storage units will have any brace on them, they're all gonna be flat.
Correct.
Right, so that, you still have a variance for all those, the only articulation you have is on the ends of the buildings that faces the public streets.
Yes ma'am, we, we have the articulation both vertically and horizontally that faces the public rights way.
What was the variance for the lighting plan?
Uh, you have a variance for the lighting plan?
I thought I saw that in there.
No, we don't have a variance for the lighting plan.
We, we had a little issue that there was some lighting wasn't showing up consistently.
Yes, no, we'll, we will make sure that our lighting plan applies completely, yes.
But what you want is security in between the buildings as much as anyone else does too.
Oh yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And did you have a question about the location of the access point to that?
No, I just had a question that your renderings didn't match your site plan, but that, it look, uh, you're gonna build to the site plan, I'm assuming, and not to the renderings.
Doors?
Man gates and access to the rear of those.
Correct.
Yeah, well, there, if you don't put it, if you put it as a site plan, there is access to the rear, we don't need man gates.
We, we will make sure we made all the fire code requirements for access there.
Alright, any questions or comments from the audience?
My name is Marlin Wallace, I live at forty-eight ten uh Wildwood Lane, I'm one of the two uh residents that lived, that bordered the property up there to the, to the north. And um I just had a, this gone by really quick, I had a few questions, um, I've lived there since uh nineteen ninety-seven and I've, I've had a lot of good fortunate luck with the, the commercial neighbors that I've had out there so far with Acme Brick and Diesel Downs kinda got shut down, and I've got Stribling, and now I'm hoping to have, you know, good luck with uh you guys here there. Um, I, I think the question, one I, has already been answered about the waiver on the sidewalk. Um, I was wanting to be sure that that was gonna be done, is that gonna be done all the way to the end of the, the, the north side of the property there, or is that to be determined at some point?
We, we, we removed the waiver request for the improvement of Wildwood, so we'll put the sidewalk in and improve Wildwood all the way to our north property boundary.
Another question I had that I couldn't discern from the picture was the, the ingress and egress off of Wildwood into the back of the storage units? Is that just a in and, and, and out, or just uh, can you explain that to me, what that's gonna look like?
It's, that entrance is actually neither, it's an emergency access only, so if the fire department needs to have access to the campus, they will come that way. The, the primary entrance for the customer will be off a wagon wheel.
Okay, um, and then another question I have is in the very back, that last storage unit is where my property borders on there. The fence, can you explain like the fence, I heard you say something about an opaque fence there and, and trees, and, and I'm concerned about the lighting that might be back there, you know, shining back there, uh that, that type of issue?
Yeah, absolutely, it's a, it's an opaque fence, so it's, it's a wood fence with brick columns every fifty feet, and then we're adding a bunch of uh evergreen and shade type trees. The lighting plan that we, we submitted to the city is to ensure that we have at least one foot candle on campus, but we don't bleed over onto our neighbors with any light pollution, so our intent is not to have any light pollution under your property.
And how, and how tall is that fence?
That fence, uh, I think it's a, it's a six-foot tall fence, but that area back there actually sits about twelve feet lower in grade. So the fence, you actually won't be able to see the building from the fence and the trees, cause, cause of the great difference.
It's the same with Acme Brick, I can't see any of their buildings either. Uh, and then you mentioned RV, RVs and such, there's no open air parking for anything on this, on this side, okay, I didn't, I didn't think so. Um, let me see. I believe that's all the comments I had, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
I don't wanna take away anything from what you've put into this, cause it looks like a great project, and we certainly appreciate all the hard work that you've worked with the, with the planning commission to put into. I would tell you just from my perspective, if this has been tabled for thirty days, I don't expect them to be brought back with pictures still not done, right, with things we're still working on adding in. If it was something that was negotiated late, I get it, that's gonna happen, but I would really encourage any engineering firm that's bringing things before this body, please try as hard as you can to give us the renderings that you want us to approve, because once we start to approve it, it's on the record as it is. So if there's things that are missing here, we're going to have to try and remember those as we go through here, but please come and bring forward, would you try as hard as you can to bring those to us, but we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Um, in looking at the landscaping along Wildwood Lane, it looks to me like that's inside the right-of-way of Wildwood, is that true?
It, it would be inside the proposed right-of-way, we're gonna have to pull it back some up onto the slopes, we'll make sure we keep it outside of the right-of-way for Wildwood then.
Cause in some places it looks like you.
It's very close, you're correct. Yes, there's a bunch of it too.
Yeah, no, I like the amount, I just don't like the location.
Any other comments from the commission? Be a call for the vote for the variances?
Call for the vote?
Have a call for a vote by Dr. Compton, is everyone in agreement to take them all together, or do we need to separate anyhow? All together?
David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Variance is passed nine zero, uh, do I have a recommendation for the waiver? Oh, never mind, I'm sorry. My fault on that, uh, I have a motion on a large scale, subject to staff tom, staff comments?
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Peters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Large scale passes nine zero?
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, next tabled item, B twenty-one dash seventy, Marco and Angela Valdez, thirty twenty-seven Shiraz Lane, variance for deviation of rear step back from twenty feet to ten feet, presented by Marco Valdez and Jasmine Acosta.
Um, hello, my name is Jasmine Acosta and um.
Marco Valdez?
And we're from thirty twenty-seven Shiraz Lane. Um, we wanted to um do the step back from twenty to ten feet, um, so we can make a pool. Um, that way we have a little bit more space um to build um a little bigger amount of, of the pool.
Staff comments?
You're staying without, outside of the ten-foot utility easement that's on the back? It would be right at the edge of the utility easement with your pool?
Um, yeah, it would be the ten feet.
Okay. And, and the storage unit that is shown on the drawing, is that a portable storage unit that can be moved?
Yes.
Okay. Ed, do you have any?
No, no, we're good.
Fire department have any comments?
Nope.
Okay.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission? Call for the vote, call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller?
Variance passes nine zero?
You need to get with the building department to get a permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next section, public hearing on rezoning, R twenty-one dash fifty-four, Keds Spot LLC, seven twenty-four Dever Street, uh, from campus type one to neighborhood center type two, presented by McClellan Consulting Engineers.
Hey, let me make a little comment about this before we start. Being in the Form Based Code district, this is not really a rezoning request as much as it is a deviation or a adjustment to the boundaries of the regulatory districts for this area. Rick, can you go to the next drawing? If you'll see the property across the street is a neighborhood center type two already. This property was included when the Form Based Code was established because it's all, assuming all of it would become part of the hospital campus, and that's why it was put in as campus type two. It's not our campus type one, it never has been owned by the fire, by the hospital, and they are proposing a use that would be better suited to be in a neighborhood center type two. If there's no objections, we will meet, do a formal amendment to the map itself rather than a rezoning. But this just tells them that we can move forward with this if everybody's in agreement with changing this from a campus type one to a neighborhood center type two. We really need a different kind of form for doing this, but we haven't had enough of them to have generated the new procedure for doing this just yet. Anybody have any questions? You have anything you want to add to this, cause I'm kinda taking your thunder on this one.
No, that, I, you said everything that I was gonna say, uh, I'm Adam Osweiler with McClellan Consulting Engineers on behalf of the applicant. Um, everything Patrick just uh said is, is kind of where we stand right now. We think that there's a better use for this as an NC two um than it currently stands, so uh we would like to move forward with changing that Form Based Code to the NC two.
And we have been working with them on a design that works within the NC two meeting the requirements of the Form Based Code as a commercial liner building, is that what we?
No, it's a, a kids' therapy clinic.
I know, but what type, building type was, I don't remember, oh, too many projects, I don't remember which one this one is. I think it's a liner building.
I think it is as well, yes.
It's brought up closer to the street.
Correct.
Along Maple Street so that it, it, it meets the idea of the Form Based Code of bringing in the parkings on the, on the inside, so you don't drive down through there and see all that massive amount of parking, and so we've been working through that design. I think it's a great design and a great location for this, we just need to amend the map. So if the, if the recommendation is we amend the map, then we'll put it on the agenda to uh, do the public hearing to do the district boundary change. And really all I need is, is there anybody who's opposed to it before we set that process into, into action? Doesn't sound like there's any opposition, okay, we'll move forward with that. Okay?
Alright, thank you. Next item on the agenda, R twenty-one dash fifty-five, County Burnett's, New Storage Elm Springs Road, fifty-three twenty-four Elm Springs Road from A one to C five, presented by Earth Plan Design Alternative.
My name is James Gertz with EDA. We're looking to rezone this property from A one to C five. The seller wishes to sell this to a buyer who's gonna be developing an indoor storage facility with associated rentals for vans and trucks. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any that I have.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, improve the city's economic basin, tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any questions or comments to the audience? To the commission?
Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Set the call for, oh, I'm sorry, call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller? Parker?
This passes nine zero?
Staff will prepare the ordinance to go to council on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Alright, next section, public hearing on conditional use, C twenty-one dash twenty-seven, Tim and Joe, Joanna, forgive me, I'll probably pronounce the name wrong, Raita, thirty-three sixty North Thompson Street, use unit forty-one, automobile sales in a C two, presented by Liliana Cuevas and Geraldo Contreras.
How you doing, my name is Gilardo Contreras. I'm not asking for conditional use for automotive sales, thirty-six sixty North Thompson. Been a dealership there and is a bin, is a dealership now.
Staff comments?
Okay, this is where a conditional use is granted to an individual in a location and it's not transferable to another when they have to come back and ask for another conditional use. Uh, the ingress and egress to the site is acceptable, the off-street parking and loading areas are acceptable, refuges and service areas are acceptable, utilities acceptable. Uh, screening and buffering uh is not applicable. Uh, I'm assuming you're gonna use the same sign that was there, you're not adding an additional signage?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, uh, the yard requirements are acceptable, the size and shape is acceptable, are you proposing any landscaping along the front? Because I think the previous owner indicated they'd do some landscaping, but it never got done.
I will do some landscaping in the future, yes.
Uh, it is acceptable if the same site plan for the previously approved conditional uses is granted or is taken care of, which would require that landscaping to be added to the site. I think there was a limit to the number of vehicles that could be placed on the lot on the previous conditional use. Do you have a number of vehicles in mind that you intend to have on the site?
Yeah, the same, th- there were sixteen cars, I think that, that was the number.
Okay, so you would be limiting your number of cars on the lot to sixteen?
Yes ma'am.
At any one time?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Kevin?
Yes.
I'd make the, the same comment that I've, I've made before about used car lots in Springdale. This has been a used car lot before, and it's been a used car lot before that. The reason that these car lots are, are generally not as successful as we would hope is because within one mile of this location, there are more than twenty used car lots. On Highway seventy-one through Springdale, we have more than fifty, just on Highway seventy-one, used car lots. So, uh, as I look to value add in the community, I try to hope we can make things better. I think this just redistributes cars in the area and, and doesn't really value add to the community, so this is a very difficult one for me to support.
Any other comments from the commission? Be a call for the vote? Have a call for vote by Mrs. Mueller?
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
David? David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes, uh, this conditional use passes eight one.
Staff will prepare the resolution to go to council on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, thank you. Next item, C twenty-one dash twenty-eight, Ferguson Sunset LTD, elevated auto spa, eight fifty-five Clayton Street, use unit forty-one, automobile sales in a C two, presented by uh, I'll pronounce your na, last name wrong, Danny.
Debenham. Debenham, yep, good. Well now, uh, I guess we don't want any more used car dealers in Springdale. So the, the difference with me is uh, I'm not actually like a car lot, I'm more, I'm, we're a detail shop, and so I buy four or five cars a month, just so that when we don't have any customers' cars to work on, we work on one we own and then we sell it. Uh, all of our vehicles are parked inside, we don't actually display anything outside and all of our sales are done via internet. People come into our office and we sit down and, and handle the sales that way, so no advertising, no signage, nothing like that, so.
Staff comments?
The ingress and egress to the uh property is acceptable. Uh, can you move, uh, go to this, to the, okay. You knew what I was saying, off-street parking and loading areas. How many bays do you have in this building? And how do you access those?
There's a single door, but we can actually fit nine vehicles inside through that one door.
Okay. And that area that you have marked on there is paved, or is it gravel?
No, that's all uh concrete in the front, as I was, or I guess to the side.
And so you can, you can park, how many vehicles did you say inside?
Nine.
Nine?
Yes.
Uh, the refuges and service area is acceptable, utilities are acceptable, there would be no screening, cause it's surrounded by commercial. You didn't indicate a sign, and you just said there would be no additional signage?
Right, it's, we just, we just have the front door, has the logo on it, and it has a line at the bottom that says used car dealer, but that's all.
Okay, do you have a used car dealership license from the state?
No, we've submitted the application, we're just kinda doing both at the same time, right?
Um, the yard requirements. In your detail shop, how many cars do you have sitting outside at any one time?
Well, I, at the end of the day, none. During the day, there's cars that come and go, usually the ones we're working on. During the day, there's cars that come and go, usually the ones we're working on, they'll get pulled in the shop and then waiting for customers to pick them up. But I guess that's a hard question to answer, we've never filled up all the spots in front of the building. Does that help? So less than seven always?
And you only do detail work? You don't do any mechanic work, you don't change oils, you don't do any of that kind of stuff?
Correct.
Detail only?
Yep.
And you wash everything inside?
Yes.
Okay. The landscaping is not applicable. I guess my concern is how do we police this and make sure there are not cars parked outside? We've, we don't have a way to make sure that happens unless somebody drives by and catches it, so. It's kind of a unique situation, we don't have, haven't dealt with this yet.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Tyler?
Correct. If we have complaints or someone wants to bring it up, it can be revoked, you're right, that's. Good point, thank you.
Yep, any other questions or comments from the commission? Be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Conditional use passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, S D twenty-one dash twenty-nine, Barry and Stephanie Bryant, fifty-nine sixty-two West County Line Road, tandem lot in A one, presented by Barry and Stephanie Bryant.
Hello, I'm Barry Bryant, and we're asking for a lot split at our current residence for the back property. With that, variance is for a thirty-foot wide private road from Elm Springs Road, I'm sorry, County Line Road back to the property. This split gives us one five-acre tract for a single-family residence at the back. The front split has already been sold, that's a five-acre tract with a house there.
And that access drive would be paved, correct?
If it must, we were asking if we could have it grandfathered as we did our current house and the houses on each side of us, which are both also gravel.
But the grandfather was for the existing houses, not to create another one. The ordinance for a tandem lot says it has to be paved back to that second lot. So you'll have to come back and ask for a variance for that if you don't want to have to pave it.
If it has to be paved, then we'll do that. So for that, then, and that has to be done at the time of the build or after the build?
It has to be done before the lot split can be filed, or you have to bond for it.
So then with the construction, that stands to damage the road as the house is being built, so we're building.
You can bond for it, and then if it is done to like it needs to be, then the bond can be released. You can either make pay, you can do a cash bond, or you can get a bond from a bonding company to bond for it, so that you have to pave it to get that released, one or the other.
So just to make sure that I understand correctly, in order for us to get this lot split, we must pave that road now.
Or bond for that pavement, so that it is completed within, usually the bond's for a couple of years, something like that. Do you have somebody who's buying, getting ready to build a house back there?
No, we don't.
Then, you know, my suggestion would be to bond for it until that house is built.
Okay.
And did you have a comment about needing another fire hydrant?
No, ma'am.
Yeah, the house is over six hundred feet from the road. You can't build a house without having a fire hydrant unless the fire marshal waves it, so. His court.
Yeah, and that would be associated with building a house, not for this process, but full disclosure, there would need to be a fire hydrant within six hundred feet of the house, or the house would need to be sprinkled.
Okay, so the conditional, or the lot split would have that condition on it before you could get a C of O for a structure, either it has to be sprinkled or there has to be a fire hydrant put within six hundred feet, correct? Okay, we can do it with just a note on the plat, that way whoever buys it knows that that situation has to happen.
Okay, so they would do that whenever they put the water line in?
I'm sorry?
They would do that once they put the water line in?
Yeah. And you have a septic system approval for the both lots because there's no sewer out there, correct?
There is not. We, I don't know how, I need to get another one for the house that's currently there, it's already approved and done.
I know, but for the other lot, we need to know that a five-acre lot is suitable.
So it needs to have a PRC test?
Yes, you need to have a PRC test before, and that would have to be done before we could sign the lot split too.
Okay.
Okay?
Current home, you have to show that the lot that you're making isn't using up the field for the current home.
Yeah, and that's pretty obvious there, well, I'm sorry, you wouldn't see that.
There's also an alternate field that's required that would be somewhere where there's not a septic system now. So there's two fields required, one that's actually being used and one in the instance that that one fails.
So at the nearest point, the current house from that point where if they built a house on the lot line would be over six hundred feet away.
Yeah, I have no doubt that it'll make it, I just wanted you to be aware.
That's what the health department has to tell us.
Okay.
That the existing lot is sufficient to cover it, and the new lot can have a separate septic system with an alternate side if they both fit and don't conflict with each other.
Would there be wording for the PRC test when they do that?
When you go to the, to the health department, you take this drawing and ask them to certify that you can get septic systems on both, on both lots.
Is that it?
All right, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Be a call for the vote? Call for vote by Mrs. Mueller?
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Conditional use passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the twenty-eighth, and it will have those conditions added to it, okay?
Thank you.
Next section, we have a preliminary plat, twenty-one dash fifteen, the peaks at Springdale Phase Two, fourteen eighteen Cooper Drive, presented by Crafton Toll.
My name is Daniel Elephant Crafton Toll and Associates, and this is a track split that we're proposing, along with easement dedications for the peaks at, peaks in Springdale Phase Two and Three, and then we've got additional lots that are being created to the north as a part of this.
Staff comments?
There are standard comments, which I won't go through, but you'll just need to display full list of setbacks for MF twenty-four, show parcel number for the property above the legal description, make sure that all of the, excuse me, utilities, including storm sewer are shown, as well as dimensions of rights of ways, street center line, things of that nature. Show, yeah, any existing utilities.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Do the, do lots one, two, and three have access to a public street directly?
We need a conditional, conditional use permit for a tandem lot to allow those to exist.
Okay, so those exist now, so what are we doing?
The conditional use has already been approved for that tandem lot split. This is just putting it on preliminary plat so they can plan, so they can afford it.
Okay.
And it's for financing purposes as much as anything else because they need separate lots to finance it through their funding agents. So that's really all it is for this. It's going to be a large scale for the whole thing, and it all connects, if you look on that green, the sheet before that shows you how it fits together. But this is for financing.
I mean, I see that it's all one development, but the question always remains, what if track one doesn't develop and sells to someone else?
Yeah, we already have the tandem, I mean, the easements already worked out.
Okay, I forgot.
Yeah.
All right, this be a motion. Motion to approve, subject staff comments? Motion by Mr. Covert? Second by Mrs. Mueller?
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Preliminary plat passes nine zero. Thank you. Next section, large-scale developments, L twenty-one dash twenty-five, Greystone Storage, seventeen ninety East Highway two sixty-four. Variance is B twenty-one dash seventy-two, variance for deviation of commercial design standards, foundation landscaping, detailed features, materials, roofs, presented by Expedient Civil Engineering.
Jason Engels with Expedient Civil Engineering. This is another storage facility like the other two that we've heard before. There is, the only addition of this one, there is some climate-controlled storage that faces Highway two sixty-four. The remainder of it is all self-storage. We try to do, on the elevations, we try to do the best job we can to meet the commercial design standards, and I'll let Dave Burris speak to that when we get to that point. I believe that we've met all the staff concerns, there may be some additional that we'll hear tonight, but with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Staff comments?
There are standard comments that I've discussed with Jason, or standard comments, rather. In terms of the commercial design for the site, continuous internal pedestrian walkways, no less than five feet width, shall be provided from the public sidewalk or right-of-way to the principal customer entrance of all principal buildings on the site. At a minimum, walkways shall connect focal points of pedestrian activity as such, but not limited to transit stops, street crossings, building and store entry points, and feature adjoining landscaped areas that include trees, shrubs, benches, flower beds, ground covers, or other such materials for no less than fifty percent of their length. Variance has been requested. And then in terms of the architectural, commercial design aspect of things, developments with facade over one hundred feet in linear length shall incorporate wall projections or recesses a minimum of three feet in depth and a minimum of twenty contiguous feet within each one hundred feet of facade length and shall extend over twenty percent of the facade. Developments shall use articulating features, excuse me, such as arcades, display windows, entry areas or awnings along at least sixty percent of the facade. A variance has been requested for that. Building facades shall include a repeating pattern that shall include no less than three of the elements listed. At least one of these elements shall repeat horizontally, all elements shall repeat at intervals of no less, or no more rather than thirty feet, either horizontally or vertically. Color change, texture, material change, expressions of architectural or structural bay through, a change in plane no less than twelve inches in width shall, or such as an offset reveal or projecting rib. There has been a variance requested for that. Rooflines shall be varied with a change in height every one hundred linear feet of building length. Parafits, gable roofs, high roofs or dormers shall be used to conceal flat roofs. Rooftop equipment from public view, alternating lengths and designs may be acceptable and can be addressed during the development plan. Variance requested. Dominant exterior building materials shall be high-quality materials. These include, without limitation, brick, native stone, synthetic stone, concrete masonry units, standard smooth face units with integral color or synthetic stucco or ephist, architectural precast concrete, decorative face concrete, masonry units such as split face scored, fluted, ground face burnished, et cetera, glass or wood, or natural or composite, a variance has been requested. Each principal building on site shall have clearly defined, highly visible customer entrances featuring three of the following: canopies, porticoes, overhangs, recesses, projections. Let's see. Display windows, architectural details such as tilework moldings which are integrated into the building structure and design. There shall also be integral planters, wing walls that incorporate landscaped areas and/or places for sitting. A variance has been requested.
Engineering comments? There's a discrepancy in the grading plan and the outlet box detail, we just need some clarification on the invert elevation there. And need to see drafts of your drainage and access easements, and the developer is required to improve the budding street to city of Springdale standards. Since this is a state highway, we did contact RDOT and they have expressed that curb and gutter is not desired in this location. However, the other improvements such as sidewalk and streetlights would still be required unless a waiver is granted.
I believe the sidewalk, staff is in support because there is no sidewalk east and west of here on either side, that they are in support of not having a sidewalk on this location.
Did you ask for a waiver?
We asked for a variance of that, yes, and some of the site design standard. There was an application that was submitted. We asked for the public connection to the public sidewalk as well as the sidewalk to be waived.
Okay, let's talk about the commercial design standard waivers first. Dave, you want to talk to us about what you're doing on this project?
So initially, this is Dave Burris, Burris Architecture. In the site layout, we intentionally tried to place most of the buildings with a short facing facade facing the streets. We didn't have the doors, which make it more difficult to articulate those facades with the self-storage program. Can we flip forward to the overall rendering, site renderings?
I don't know that I included a full overall site rendering.
Okay. So, there we go. So the short facades that are all facing the streets, we have three buildings that are facing that south end, all have improved materials, of brick, projections past three feet, as well as roof projections with both brick and stone. Utilized storefront glazing as well as some canopies as allows for some of those public areas. Additional landscaping was provided beyond what was required per code, as well as a screen with brick pilasters all along that front-facing facade. We made the intentional decision, again, to wrap that brick on that larger climate-controlled building, that western facade, down about twenty-five feet, where we have a parapet type of condition over there as well. The rest of the buildings, the remaining buildings, which were back and screened by both landscaping and opaque screening, are all part of that design waiver and metal facades with self-storage doors.
Anything else? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
What, what's the hardship with doing the sidewalk? I know there's none out there, but is there a reason it can't be built?
We originally had it shown, but we were, staff said they would probably support not building sidewalk, that's why we removed it.
So there's no hardship, just?
Well, I mean, the hardship that we presented was there's a three-foot ditch along, I guess that would be your hardship, Ben. There's a three-foot deep ditch along the front edge there.
And the back of that ditch is, there's not room between the ditch and the right-of-way line?
No, I believe the ditch comes almost all the way to the fence or the right-of-way. So it'd have to be in the city or the state highway right-of-way, which it just doesn't seem visible without a retaining wall to retain that spot.
Okay. And the opaque screening, can you describe that? It's opaque, and then are there evergreens or the deciduous trees?
So we did two types of fencing, we've got a six-foot wood privacy fence with landscaping in front of it on a majority of the rear and sides. On the front, we felt like heavily landscaping with a wrought iron fence with brick pilasters would be a bit more visually pleasing instead of the wood privacy fence. So we've opted for the wrought iron in the, in the front-facing southern facade with brick pilasters.
So the wood fencing on the west side of the building? Or the wood fencing is on the west side or east side of the building?
So the, I believe the building, the building is the fencing material, if you will, on the western climate control. Let's go back to that site plan. Um, and so we're in that, uh, northwestern corner, that fence line runs north, then it runs west, all the way to the end of the property line. Then it runs north, and then all along the north side, and then down to meet those two on the eastern side. There is a, uh, there is also a fence that kind of connects those two to kind of secure that site between those two buildings on that east side. And if I'm not mistaken, Fire had requested that to be paved.
It's paved.
It's, it's paved. Okay, yes, paved, uh, in between there just for fire access.
So, so the building is the fence, or in the fence?
The building is the fence.
Goes into the building and then it's?
Right, the building is the fence on the easternmost facade and the climate-controlled building.
And those, those, uh, facades are all just metal?
Facades are, uh, metal. Uh, can we flip to the building, building number three? Uh, that's, uh, building one. No, that, that's the climate-controlled building, that's all of the climate-controlled building. Um, so yes, we have metal wall panel on the east and the, the western side, so, uh, kind of hidden by there that, uh, by the, by the, by the part of that southernmost drawing, that is our parapet condition that would be the visible facade. There's an existing fence line on that western facade and, uh, that, that's. Six foot, there's an existing neighboring six-foot wood privacy fence that, that screens that, uh, that side of that, that building as well. Again, another reason why we wrapped that, so when you're coming up and down that street, that you see that brick instead of that metal.
And then you're landscaping there too?
And, yes, it's all, all perimeter landscaping to intentionally kind of self-screen those buildings.
Kind of break up that, kind of hide the wall there with landscaping as much as.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Be a call for the vote on the variance. A call for vote by Mr. Tyler, you guys want to take them all together?
Okay.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Variance is passed nine zero. Have a motion on the large-scale subject of staff comments? Motion by Mrs. Mueller? Second, second by Mr. Peters?
David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Large-scale passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, dropping down to, now on B, Board of Adjustments, B twenty-one dash seventy-eight. Capture last a weekie, one seventeen Purcell Street, deviation required parking spaces from four to two.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Casper Lastwick, I'm the property owner at, um, one-one-seven Purcell Street, which is just down in, uh, downtown Springdale. This is, um, under the jurisdiction of the Form-Based Code. Um, this property is, uh, zoned neighborhood residential type two. And, um, one of the, uh, building types that's allowed on this property is a duplex bungalow. Uh, currently, the property is vacant, and I intend to develop this property type on this property. And in addition to the various setbacks and building height and building size requirements within the Form-Based Code, there's also a provision that requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit. Um, given the narrowness of the lot and the small size of, uh, the duplex that will be able to be supported by this lot, these provisions of the code essentially self-contradict. Um, it makes it impossible to put four parking spots on this property while also complying with the various setback and, um, build-to-line requirements. And that's why I'm here, uh, seeking a variance to drop that down to two permanent parking spots, so one per dwelling unit. And you can see from the floor plan that they're one-bedroom, uh, dwelling units. Um, and then allowing for two overflow or guest or temporary parking spaces. Uh, so you can see from, uh, the feasibility study that I've drawn up, four cars will fit comfortably on, uh, the, the driveway within, uh, the space, uh, of, of the property. They will be off the street, they won't be obstructing the flow of traffic or of emergency vehicles or anything like this. But simply put, they will be in an arrangement, uh, that will allow for two, uh, permanent parking spots and two kind of temporary guest overflow parking.
Staff comments?
And, and with this arrangement, there would be no parking on the street?
No.
The street is not wide enough for parking?
Uh, I understand.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
This really is. I was saying there is not room for parking on the street.
And I understand that, uh, I'm not allowed to provide street parking for any of the, for either myself or an, anyone else who would live here, yes.
Well, I know one of the things that we've talked about looking in this whole area more than one time is to do some one-way streets that would allow for parking on the street, but that, none of that has been brought forward up to this point. I'm not saying it can't happen, but right now, we're saying that there's just not, it's not a good idea to have permanent parking on the street in this location. There are other parking spaces in that area that are available if you had it, other guests that could park off-site and walk to this location too, so.
Uh, yes, sir, there, there's two one-bedroom units, one is, uh, around five hundred square feet and the other is five hundred fifty.
Technically, this is a deviation of the Form-Based Code, not a variance. Because there aren't variances in, there are deviations. We would be approving a deviation of the Form-Based Code.
This be a call for the vote. A call for vote by Mr. Parker?
Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? David?
This passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, B twenty-one dash seventy-nine, Diana Gander, eighteen oh-five Watson Avenue. Uh, deviation of driveway requirements expanding west toward the front door, presented by Dan, Diana Gander, Dale Baumann.
Yes, this is Dale Baumann, and I'm representing my daughter, Diana Gander. And she's wanting, uh, to expand her driveway, give her a little more room. And, uh, she was asking for an, a variance.
Staff comments?
Katie, you want to address this one?
Sure, so our, our driveway expansion, um, process allows for parking on the opposite, or expanded parking on the opposite side of the front door. It does not allow for parking on the same side as the front door, side of the driveway.
Is there a reason why this can't be expanded to the opposite side from the front door?
What she was doing was, she was, uh, uh, there was a big tree there, and took out all of her, uh, walkway and, uh, her porch and all that, you know, the roots. So they had that all taken out, and they were just pouring, um, the new porch and the walkway. And she just wanted to bring it on out to, you know, to make it all look nice and everything that way, straight on out to the road.
Katie, does this, it doesn't exceed the forty percent?
What's that?
I'm asking Katie, does it ex- exceed forty percent of the front being paved?
I don't believe so.
Does it make the driveway wider than?
But not, not wider than forty.
Okay.
I think one of the constraints for the opposite side of the front door is that you do have to stay, um, three foot off your property line. I think that was one of their constraints on the other side.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Yes.
Yes, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is Russell Bunch, I live at six oh eight Maria Street. I'm directly across the street from this address, and I have no objection to these, uh, guys allowing them a variance. In fact, from a safety standpoint, I think it would be a real good idea. At the current time, they're parking a vehicle on the street, and it is about twenty feet from a stop sign at the corner of Watson and Maria. And people swing around that parked car all the time. And sooner or later, someone's going to come off of Maria Street, onto Watson, and they're going to run into someone that's pulling around that parked car. So I think you ought to approve their request.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Peters?
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller?
This passes nine zero.
Katie, do they need to get their drive-by permit?
Yes, just call the engineering department, and we can get you set up with that permit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, B twenty-one dash eighty, Isabel Delgado and Luis Alverengas, Alverenga, uh, twenty-nine seventy-five East Robinson Avenue, variance for deviation of utility requirement.
Hi, yes, my name's Isabel Delgado, and this is.
Luis Alverenga.
And we are on twenty-nine seventy-five East Robinson Avenue, and we are needing a, um, variance for our utility post in order to, um, hook up our appliances, cooking appliances. It'll definitely be a little bit more convenient, and it'll benefit us with, um, the cooking as well for hooking up all of our appliances and all that good stuff.
Food truck was approved.
Yes.
It was approved at council, but instead of operating on a generator, you want to set another power pole and have a separate meter for this, and you have to have a variance to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it variance or is it amendment to the judicial?
It's actually a variance to allow the utility, because it's not supposed to have pickups if it is a mobile vending on the site. We had to ask for a variance, but, if you do, you still have to take care of water and gray water the same way.
Yes.
Just powers all the rest.
Yeah.
That it?
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller? Parker?
This passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do they need a building permit or an electrical permit?
I believe so, but I'm not sure. If you don't have one, you'll have to get electrical permit.
Next item, B twenty-one dash eighty-three, William and Julia Hamilton, five oh-six Lakeview Drive, variance for deviation of rear setback from twenty feet to five feet, presented by William and Julia Hamilton. You probably thought you had two things ahead of you, didn't you?
That's okay. Good evening, uh, William Gobanmark, Hamilton is in Milwaukee. Uh, we're at five oh-six West Lakeview Drive, uh, requesting that variance from twenty feet to five feet is our, uh, the way the house is set up on this property, uh, that butts the, uh, the golf course, the Springdale Country Club golf course there. Uh, and the way the house is positioned, we have approximately twenty-one point seven five to twenty-two feet in the back of our property. And our, um, our soffits in our house are three feet, so we're, we're requesting the variance for the, uh, for various landscaping, but for this variance specifically for the, the pool that we, uh, want to put in, it's a roughly nine by fifteen small pool. Um, with, uh, it's going to be gunny in ground.
Okay, staff comments?
Uh, there's a utility easement on your rear property line, are you studying out of that utility easement?
Um, I ha- I don't really know what the utility easement distance is, um, from the back property line.
Did you get a cer- do you have a survey of the property that shows you where your property pins are and where the utility easement is?
Um, I could not find the, um, any kind of plat for that.
Okay, and you didn't have it surveyed when you purchased the property?
No.
Okay. Does the pool itself have to be fenced with a certain height of fence? And?
Yeah, the, two things, one, the pool will have to be fenced, and we will have to identify that utility easement with a surveyor before we can start digging a pool.
Okay.
And we can't give you a variance till we know you're outside of that utility easement.
And the utility easement is typically what?
Well, I don't know that this is, typically it's twenty feet. But I don't know if that's ten foot on your property and ten foot on the, uh, uh, country club or, or not, because I, we, we didn't, we didn't have any information on that.
This is an outlot, it's not a, it's not a platted subdivision, so we don't have a plat, so it actually would all be in your survey or in the, in the instruments that are filed with your lot.
Did you have any conversations with Springdale Water about the location of that sewer line?
Um, no, just from the neighbor saying where it was at, but it's, it's on the other side of my property line.
Okay, I would suggest that we table this, and you at least meet with Springdale Water to see if they can have some information that shows where that sewer line is, before we start digging and moving anything back there, because you don't want to dig into a sewer line. That's really not a good idea.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm, yeah, that, that can be done for sure.
Did you have one call? I, it, have you already started work on it?
No, not the, the excavation for the pool, I'm doing some, uh, patio back there.
Oh, okay.
And the, the excavators are going to be there, so it's just a handy time.
Okay, I would suggest that you talk to the, uh, Springdale Water Utilities and let them, and Mike Imes is probably a good person to start with, because they have their, their sewer lines pretty well marked, and so maybe we can figure out that way. You may have to have the property surveyed before we can deal with this variance request.
Okay.
Patsy? Patsy? I noticed that all, what you're doing will align very nicely with all of your neighbors. It certainly will fit in nicely, but you may want to contact, uh, the country club, because you're budding right up to that out-of-bounds. And there may be some easement area in there, there could be some utility lines in there. I'd really urge you to contact them as well as Springdale Water, before you do any more work in there.
I've actually, I've contacted the, the country club there, and their, um, their information to me was that I would need to follow whatever, you know, you guys said was okay.
That, that usually works a lot, yeah.
Did you have a name for the, you said, uh, Mike?
Mike Imes.
Imes?
Uh-huh. Yeah, if you'll contact the office in the morning, we can give you that contact information. Or you can just call Springdale Water Utilities and tell them you need to talk to somebody about an easement adjacent to the country club, see who they give it to you.
So we would need to come back to a, a city council meeting to?
Yeah, you'll, if, if, if there is a utility easement there, we can't grant you a variance to allow you to build in that utility. we can't grant you a variance to allow you to build in that utility easement. It may have to, it may can be vacated part of it, but there's a separate process that you have to go through before we can grant you a variance to be in it if you actually are in the easement itself. Okay, so after you talk to them, contact our office and we'll help you through that part.
Well, they'll need to get it surveyed too, right?
Well, Springdale Water may have enough information without having to have it surveyed. I don't know, there may be some pins set out there that they know. We're just gonna have to see what kind of information you're gonna get. But you may have to have it surveyed too.
Which, from a tabling perspective, if that has to be done, I don't know that they could get back here in time.
No, and if they can't, they'll have to re-notify and do it again. But we'll try to get it in thirty days. We'll just table it till the next meeting, seeing if we can get enough information to put it back on the agenda or not.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you understood that on there. I mean, if the water department has enough that they can go off of and can be able to advise us, then we can most likely hear this next month. But if you have to get that resurveyed, you'll probably have to go through submission again on this. Okay. Which they have to notify property owners and stuff. Just curious, would the original house drawings with the architectural plat, would that suffice or?
If it is a site plan that shows where the house is located on the lot itself. If it's just the drawing of the house itself, you know, it may not be, I don't know, we'd have to just see.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
You might also try from the Washington County City Club website, putting in your address and there might be a survey.
Okay. Okay. I know it's been the same owner since the house, you built that thing?
Yeah, I, I didn't.
In eighty-five?
I didn't see one then and it was built. It was built a long time ago when you just kind of walked out there and marked off an area and did it. And sometimes we have to adjust some of that stuff that didn't get. We have more accurate now ways of doing things than we did back then, if you want to know the truth.
Okay.
Trying to help you as much as we can.
No, that's, yeah, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be back.
All right, so we'll table that one. Next item, B twenty-one dash eighty-four, Jake Norton, forty fifty-six Kings Place, variance for deviation of minimum separation for a horseshoe dri- horseshoe driveway. Pronounce it just like it said in there. From a hundred and fifty feet to a hundred feet, Jake, presented by Jake Norton.
Hello, my name's Jake Norton and my wife Jenny couldn't be here tonight. Yeah, so I live here. We just moved to Springdale about a year ago from Dallas and we're excited about the expansion. I'm sure you guys are well aware of the road just to our east. When this comes through, they will be removing some trees and things like that, but also expanding the current drive. With that, we're wanting to add a secondary entry point to our home on the north side and it is under a hundred and fifty feet. It's at a hundred. And so that's why we're here today to talk to you guys and see if there's any problems with it.
Katie, do you know if this was part of the settlement for acquiring the right of way on this project?
We acquired, we acquired right of way from the previous property owner.
Okay, and there was no mission of need for another driveway from the previous property?
No, no, so this, now that.
So this is something that you wanted to add, not because of the, of the widening of the road. This is, you, you want that access to the, the second access point for what, for what reason?
So several of the homes have secondary buildings for shops and things like that. This would provide a second place so that there could be a horseshoe, so I could drop supplies off, things like that, remove mowers. I helped my mother and my sister mow their yards. It just would make it a lot easier for me to come in and out of the property.
My only question on this is, it's variance for Fortieth Street, not Kings Place, right?
You're putting the second driveway on Fortieth Street?
Yes, ma'am.
To the north and for the existing drive. Your driveway into your garage actually comes off of Fortieth Street.
It does today and it will, the second one I'm asking for, correct.
So the horseshoe creates a horseshoe on Fortieth Street where you come in by the drive?
Yeah.
And you want to connect the two together.
I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, because the address of the house is on Kings Place. But this is actually on Fortieth.
Correct, the, two of the, the sixteen plots, both of them on the east side. And the covenant said that the driveways, sorry, the front has to face to Kings Place, but for some reason ours is off Fortieth Street.
Your house actually faces onto Kings Place. You just have a driveway that accesses off of Fortieth Street. It meets the covenant requirements of the subdivision, but it has a driveway access off of Fortieth Street.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
What, what street classification is Fortieth Street? Is that a major collector?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's definitely a collector street though.
It connects wagon wheel to Spring's road.
What was the question? I couldn't hear.
I was asking about the street classification in Fortieth Street, whether it's a major collector, minor collector, or local street.
It's a minor collector.
Minor collector with speed limits of?
I don't know if it's going to change with the improvements. The master street plan would be? Thirty-five miles per hour.
Normally, we don't allow driveway access to off of Fortieth Street. Is that where you're going with?
That's, yeah, I mean, ultimately, we don't like one access off of a collector, much less two.
And that's why the, the houses had to front onto Kings Place. I don't, I didn't realize that there were driveways off of it for garages until I saw this one.
There are other houses on the street. Obviously, they built a long time ago. They, there are other horseshoe drives just within quarter mile or so.
But they're not in a platted subdivision like this one was?
I'm not sure. Off the top of my head.
This is one of those subdivisions that were plotted that there's no access to, Fortieth Street.
Well, for, for me, I think a minor collector's primary role is to move cars around town and for that reason, I don't know that I could support this.
Okay, let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote and Mr. Covert?
Peters?
No.
Tyler? Austin? Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
David? Mueller?
No.
Parker? Parsley?
No. This does not pass eight one.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision to the city council. You have to apply, you have to submit that appeal within fifteen days. You have to notify all the existing property owners that'll be put on the planning commission, I mean, city council agenda for them to hear the appeal.
Just so I'm clear, the main reason is just the speed limit?
Because of the classification of the street, which is a collector's street.
And that's a minor collector, but will most likely be going to a major?
I don't think it's changing classifications as it's being developed. But it will have four lanes, at least four lanes of traffic through there with a multi-use trail on the west. I think this is that area where it switches to the east side on this one. Because it switches over, yeah.
But three lanes, yes.
No, it's four lanes. It'll be four lanes when it's finished in it. Is it three? Okay, I don't remember which is which. Three lanes, so it's a center turn lane and two access, two way traffics.
And for him to appeal to city council, it needs to get with?
It's to file your appeal in the city clerk's office within fifteen days. And it may be thirty, because this is a subdivision thing. Call me in the morning. I'll tell you whether it's fifteen or thirty, because I don't remember now what's fifteen or thirty. You're gonna appeal it to the city council?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next item, B twenty-one dash eighty-five, Renita Ward. Eight ten Morrison Place, variance for deviation of front setback from thirty feet to five feet and rear setback from twenty feet to five, presented by Renita Ward.
Good evening, my name is Renita Ward and our house is at eight ten Morrison Place. And the reason why we're wanting variance is, is in order to build a shed in my backyard away from the trees.
What size shed are you building?
It's a ten by sixteen.
Okay, and how tall is it?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I think we answered it in some of the paperwork.
Okay, and did you look at this one? And the only reason I had is to make sure that you don't, your one is too tall either.
Yeah, this thing is, this thing's already built. We're here because we required them to get a permit. We put a stop work order on it. I would guess to me, because it's a little low on the back of street side, that it's probably about twelve feet on that side. Because it's, it's, it sits up on, on the piers a little bit there.
But there is a utility easement on the rear side of this building. Does the building actually approach into that utility easement?
I'm not sure, but they didn't ask for any variance. I think that's a five foot easement. It's hard to tell. The plat's really broken up on the Washington County website.
Okay. And because it is a corner lot and it has two fronts, so wouldn't we have? It has two fronts and two sides?
Yes.
Okay, but so how do we get a rear side setback on this one if it has two fronts and two sides? Am I looking at the wrong one?
No, you're right. That's technically a side. Somehow it got said rear, but it's technically a slot side.
Okay, so it's setting back from the back of street side. How far? It's really confusing.
Yeah, it's five feet from back of, from the right away back of street. It appears to be five feet from the, the side between Morrison and where the street is, Thomas, yeah.
Do we have any kind of a sketch of what this looks like?
There's a, there's an arrow picture with a photo in the back.
Okay.
I took some pictures of the backyard. It's not as pretty as some of these.
With the blue tarp on?
Yeah, we had tried to cover it so it wouldn't get damaged by the rain.
And it's on a slab?
It's sitting on some cement, the, the.
It's a wooden floor on piers.
So can it be moved?
It's, it's cemented into the ground.
You'd have to cut the piers off and lift it and then move it. It's set in concrete.
Okay.
But if you put skids under it, it'd be moved.
Yeah, you could, you could, you could put skids under it and then cut it off and then pull it off, yes.
Is that size, does that?
It's a little bit, it's a little bit too big to meet the, the local building standard. It's a hundred and sixty square feet and can't be over a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, and another reason why we built it over there is because we have trees on the other side of the yard and I really didn't want to get rid of those trees, because my husband planted them and he passed away from COVID in January. I really didn't want to get rid of them.
Sorry to hear that. Anything else? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, if you'll go to the mic and state your name and address, please.
A.G. Russell, eight eleven Morrison, right across the street. And it looks like it's gonna be just fine. I mean, it doesn't look out of, out of proportion or out of kilter for other, other buildings that are done on down Backus or down Morrison.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote and Mr. Covert?
Tyler? Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller?
Yes.
Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
V variance passes nine zero.
Does she need to come get a building permit?
Have you applied for a building permit yet? That's a stop work order.
Stop work order. I have paid seventy-five dollars. I thought that.
That's, that's for the variance. You'll have to come in and get a building permit. Just come into our office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, B twenty-one dash eighty-seven, Sam's Real Estate Business Trust, Andy's Frozen Custer, thirteen twenty-five South Gene George Boulevard, variance for deviation of minimum driveway separation. Also, talk about B twenty-one dash eighty-eight, Andy's Frozen Custer, variance for deviation in commercial design standards, building foundation landscaping. Both of these presented by Anderson Engineering.
Yes, I'm Kip Williams with Anderson Engineering, happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Okay, the first one is for the distance between the two drives. Do you know what the distance between the drives are?
Between the end of the radius is about a little over ten feet. Between the very, yeah, where it ends and cuts off right there, between the two.
Okay. Looks a little bit wider than that, but. And this is to allow for you to have a separated drive up window that will double stack cars into it and have one receiving line at the pickup and then come straight out of that location?
Yes, two twelve foot lanes to fifteen and exit only, yes.
There? Any questions or comments? To the commission?
Is the north drive limited for the distance to four twelve? Is that why it is where it is?
There's some limited frontage and also, yeah, I think, you know, get some separation between four twelve and driveways, safer.
So is that, is that put in place by four twelve right away or is that your decision that?
Limited, yeah, we have limited frontage of property, the distance, it's limited between the radius. We didn't, you know, go out of property boundaries.
What is that distance?
Between the, to the property line?
From the four twelve up to your, to your, what's the, in other words, what's the requirement?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. As far as requirement distance from four twelve, yeah, I'm not sure.
What is the distance that you have on here? How far is it from four twelve to that, to the north side of that drive?
Off the top of my head, I am not sure. I don't have it marked on our site layout, but, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head, the exact distance.
Okay. I mean, there is a big drainage structure on the north side of that property, which is not on your property. The actual drainage structure is not on your property. Correct?
Uh, correct.
That's all part of the right away that's at that location, so.
What, what's the distance supposed to be between drives?
It's supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet between the drives on a single track. But you don't have a hundred and fifty foot frontage along, along that street to start with.
Yeah, so that was the biggest reasoning.
Yeah.
So you need a variance to have two drives, you have to have.
Yes, yeah, the keep flow traffic going around driveway and, you know, safer for emergency vehicles on the in and out entrance on the south side.
And the point at which these two entrances are ten, less than ten feet apart from each other?
Well, that, I think that's number, by looking at it, but the, the distance is keep the radius, yeah, just off the south, the south radius and stuff like that. But that's just the design we proposed and that they like to use and it keeps it, you know, that distance, it keeps it further away from four twelve. That was reasoning. Exact number, distance, don't know off the top of my head, but that was in the design purpose, just safer, keep traffic turning out of it away from four twelve. Because it's, as you all know, pretty busy.
Just, just to clarify, this is one way in on the south side and one way out on the north side, is that right?
It's in and out on the south side, but one way out on the north, the drive there, yes. Yes.
So if you come in and park on the south side, you can go back out that drive? If you need to get the drive through, you gotta go all the way around and come back in.
Yeah, the north, the north has two drive-throughs on that and then it comes down to one to actually do the pickup.
The idea was to keep from stacking cars up on Thias Drive and put them on the side itself to, to stack them.
Yeah, I like, I like that part.
Yeah.
Just trying to picture the conflicts out on the Thias. If someone's coming out of the south drive and out of the north drive, do they have enough time to see one another?
We, we looked at the possibility of a pass drive around to go around the driving lanes and the side is just not big enough to do that either.
And is the northway, the north driveway designed as a right out? Because it appears that it's not.
It's just exit only.
Go either direction.
Yes.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's, it's to the commission.
Um, okay, the, the only, we just voted down this exact variance on a minor collector for a single family home. This is, we don't even know the distance of this, uh, north driveway from four twelve in one of the highest traffic areas in our city. I, I can't, uh, I can't reconcile that.
Okay, but this is no access to four twelve. They can't access four twelve, they've got to access Mathis Drive, which is not a collector's street. It's just a local street that goes into Sam's Club and that, so it's a little bit different as far as that's concerned, but, uh...
Well, so maybe they're not on four twelve, but they're on, you know, I mean, this is, this is right by four twelve, I just, I don't, um... I, to me, I, I don't, I don't understand why we would, uh, I guess to me, it, two, um, variances that, uh, this one is, to me, a lot more... I think there's a lot more, uh, safety concerns for this variance than there was the previous one. And so I guess I just, um, I, you know, this is, this is why we, I think this is why we have traffic problems. Because when we have ingress, degress this close together and then you have this exit onto that north, uh, driveway, it's not, uh, turn right on them. You could, you would have to turn left. If you couldn't go right on four twelve, you'd have to exit left on the thighs and go back around. I, I, I guess I just...
Okay, might I suggest that we just table this because you still have a variance on the foundation landscaping, but we haven't settled on the design of the building because... The, uh, renderings we d- we have do not have stone on them and they have to have. You've got to meet the requirements of the overlay district, so I would suggest we table this and let us go back and you come in and sit down with staff and let's, let's work through this and see what we can work out. We have a better idea of the distances and that kind of stuff.
Okay, yeah, we brought up the tension architect about this, break this stone and they plan on switching it to stone and updating the elevations accordingly and stuff.
Yeah, let's, let's get all that coordinated to come back and, and look at the site a little bit, little bit better and maybe we can have some better information for the planning commission and show them how the entire site works better, okay?
And that's just, you want the distance between four twelve and the north driveway?
Let's-
Can we go back to that real quick, this, that drawing? Um, you know, I, I've seen a, a very tight lot like this before, um, actually up in Bentonville, off of, um, one oh two, I guess that is. There's a Taco Bell that's there. And what they actually did is wrap the, the drive, the drive-through around the front of the building, but still use one entrance. One, one entrance, exit and that whole piece. So is there really a need to have two different drives in here, or could that be wrapped around the front of the building?
Mostly the site, like it being so tight like it is, also with the drainage easement right there.
It's just something, I'm not gonna design it tonight, I'm just sitting here giving that a suggestion, but I've seen it in other areas before. Um, I mean, that's a lot right there on, on that road, so.
Okay, let's, let's table both of those. You schedule a meeting with staff and let's go through it and see what we can come up with.
Okay, will do.
So we're tabling the second group as well?
Yes. Both things for Andy's.
All right, um, next item B twenty-one dash eighty-nine, Cynthia Salazar, nineteen oh four Melissa Lane. Variance for deviation of driveway requirements expanding west toward the front door, presented by Cynthia Salazar.
Um, yes, hello, my name is Cynthia Salazar, uh, residing in nineteen oh four Melissa Lane. We're just wanting to expand the, um, both, the, the driveway, three feet on both sides. And then if we could have an entry leading up to the door, about four feet.
Katie? So we have already approved her expansion on the opposite side of her front door. And so she was just asking for the variance for the front side, or front door side as well.
Did you calculate whether or not she's got forty percent of the front page?
She will, if, if she, she will still have to meet that.
But do you know whether, if this is a, this variance is granted, it will stay wa- under the forty percent?
Y- yeah, she is able to stay under the forty percent.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Just a point of clarification, Chairman, we just recently, uh, a few, a few properties before, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong. You said that we do not normally approve on the front door side, correct? We approve the far side, we do not approve the front side, and what we're asking for now is a three foot extension on the front door side.
Yes.
That we previously turned down in another project.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we did.
Be a call for the vote? Call for the vote? Call for vote by Mr. Peters?
Austin? Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Uh, this passes seven two.
Uh, you need to get with the, uh, engineering department to get your, uh, expansion permit.
Uh, next item W twenty-one dash sixteen, Casey's General Store, northeast corner of East Robinson and Oriole Street, waiver of sidewalk requirements presented by Morrison Shipley.
Hey, good evening, this is Dirk with Morrison Shipley requesting the waiver as requested. Do you guys have any questions?
Okay, let's, you're building the sidewalk along four twelve and you get to the very east side and there's a little small portion. How, how, how many, how many feet of sidewalk are we talking about this waiver for?
Let's see if it lists. Off the top of my head, I don't know the exact, hold on, let me get my variance here for a second.
Thirteen, this is thirteen linear feet of the sidewalk between Casey's Southern Interest Drive and the east boundary line. And what you want to do is pay the city eight hundred and twenty dollars for that piece of sidewalk.
That is correct, it's that last thirteen feet. Because when that sidewalk is built out, the disconnect between that elevation and the property to the east is fairly severe. So the request is to pay the fee in lieu, let it grate out, and when it develops next, then the sidewalk could be put where they meet appropriately.
So when that property develops, we can work that transition and have that eight hundred and twenty. First, we were all in a panic thinking, oh, you didn't want to do the sidewalk, we worked so hard to get the sidewalk on here. We're just giving up thirteen feet.
It is just the, the last portion east of the drive.
Okay.
That last thirteen linear feet.
And as the property to the east develops, we will have the funds to, to make that transition, so it's, that's what the waiver is.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission, this be a recommendation?
Actually, if they're making a payment in lieu of it, if you guys approve it, then all they have to do is make that payment, we don't have to go to council with it, cause we have the money to do that.
So is this a call for the vote?
Yes, it's really a call for the vote.
Okay. Have a call for the vote? Call for the vote? Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David? Mueller? Parker? Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
This is nine zero. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Planning Director report?
The, uh, city council in the month of September approved all the rezonings that were submitted and all the conditional uses. And I'll go and read specific one if you want me to, but just assume that everything we sent to them was approved. They approved the waiver of street improvements for a single family home on North Forty-eighth Street. They approved the execution of the contract for the extension of Gene George Boulevard South from, uh, Duntherson Parkway to, uh, New Hope Road. Uh, they levied the ad valorem taxes for both counties. And the work session is set for October the nineteenth. The plan is to have a summary of everything that we're, we've talked about in one document, so y'all can kind of see where we are with all that. Um, we need a little bit more time, but we'll have as much of it ready for you as we can. And then to go over the downtown master plan timeline, uh, council recommended, committee last night recommended to the full council, a recommendation for approval. So we'll be starting that downtown planet, master plan update, so we'll bring you up to date on where we are on that.
Starting at five or five thirty?
Starting at five. Have all our meetings starting at five, so you don't have to remember which meeting it is as to what time you're supposed to be here.
Okay.
Like, actually, it works for all of us much better. Ben asked for it, but it does work better for all of us, so.
Anybody else have anything?
Two really quick things, one, I want to appreciate the staff for working with the guests tonight on their, on their waiver approvals. Makes it go so much quicker when you've already done a lot of that pre-work for us and have already talked through things with them, so thank you so much for that. Second thing is I'd ask staff to please tell every developer or every engineering firm actually that comes in, please do not come in here without knowing your facts. If we have someone to come up and the only thing they have to talk about is a thirteen foot piece of, of waved concrete at the end and they have no idea how big that is, come on. So please just continue to remind them, I know you're doing it, I'm just asking, continue to remind them, please, we don't expect you to have every answer, but I can at least expect you to be able to tell me why you are here. And the answer of I have no idea or that I don't have those information is unacceptable, particularly when you've been tabled for a month. So that's my ten cents on it, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yep, Patsy, so, uh, deviation in the form-based code, is that appealable?
Yes.
So it's, it is a variance that is appealable to council?
It's technically a, well...
It's, it's just the first one I've ever experienced, so.
Because the ordinance that the council said was for variances, and this is not a variance, it's a deviation, I don't know, I'll have to talk to ordinance about that one.
All right, dig in.
We kind of leave that one as it is and we'll be okay.
You needed something to do, so we gave that to you, so, all right.
I want to hurry up and get that, cause we try really hard not to have deviations.
All right, thank you all, meeting adjourned.